...2017 school committee meeting. The time now is 6:30 PM. We'll be entering into executive session to continue discussion relative to collective bargaining with employee groups and the strategy should be followed and on continued ongoing litigation. The school committee will reconvene in open session following executive session of approximately 7:00 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Definitely.
So I have a motion and a second on the floor. This does require a roll call vote. Mrs. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Chair votes as well. At this time, we'll be entering into executive session and will be joining you at 7:00 PM for our regular scheduled school committee meeting. Thank you. Good evenings. I would like to call to order the October 18, 2017 school committee meeting. The time now is 7:01 PM. The October 18, 2017 school committee meeting will be televised and recorded. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify himself or herself. Thank you. At this time, I just want to say it's been a difficult few weeks for the Tewksbury community. We would like to extend our heartfelt sympathy and prayers to the families of Rhonda LaRoe, Kristin Lumina, and Kevin Mansfield. I would like to ask everyone to please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to stand for their pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America because we're proud of our people, stand one nation under our individual legal and ethical justice for all.
Okay, we have no recognition this evening, so at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our student representative from the high school, Ms. Grace Morris, for the Tewksbury Moa High School Award.
So these past couple of weeks, Student Council had an officer shop at Willie Cross and Worcester. Homecoming week went well, and they were very glad to see all the participation during Saturday. DECA is acquiring more members and working on the fashion show. Echo Club and International Club are both participating and have birthday on the 21st. SAD Club is coming up on Red Ribbon Week, which highlights the danger of misuse of drugs, and are sponsoring a school buy of red colored day. They will be tying red ribbons on cars to remind students to live above the influence. NHS started tutoring after school at Orion. They will be selling pop sockets at Apple Fest, and they helped raise money for a Texas high school by having a bake sale at the parent teacher conferences. And lastly, Best Buddies is going to have their first unified basketball game tomorrow at the high school at 4:00 to 6:00, and they're getting ready for their Halloween party.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. We appreciate your update. Feel free to reach out to us at any time with anything else you have opportunities to make.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Malone now for our presentations this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We certainly would like to take this opportunity to discuss the very recently released MCAS results for the district, and certainly typically, this creates a sense of excitement when we talk about MCAS results, and it gives us an opportunity to look at all those academic interventions and instructional opportunities we've taken during the year, see where that reward payoff is, and also analyze where we need to work with. This year, we do have some massive changes coming into the state, which is very important as we look at these situations. 20th anniversary of MCAS. There have been some massive changes, and I say it in the sense of to remind everyone that again, Massachusetts is the number one performing state in the country as far as student assessment, reflecting the NAP test, it's affecting the PISA test, it's affecting AP participation scores across the board. So it's certainly an opportunity as a state that we can be very proud. They have made some massive changes on the test itself, and certainly some massive changes on how we as school districts now interpret this. For an average eighth grade student, over the past four years, in fifth grade, they might have taken an MCAS test. In sixth grade, they could have taken a PARC test. In seventh grade, they took, would have taken an MCAS 2.0 test, and now they'd be taking the Next Generation MCAS test. So there's been quite a fluctuation in the testing alignment of the standards. This is hard work. Our district has been doing a lot of aligning. We've certainly moved with the state in adding an additional 2,500 technology devices to the district to ensure our students are right there taking this test online with the rest of the state. But this is going to be a benchmark. You probably haven't seen a change in the test and the way the test is scored and interpreted since its inception. In fact, and you'll hear some of this from Ms. Reagan, which you talked specifically about our results at Tewksbury, what this means for our students, for our failures, and for our staff. We will be going through this year actually without an accountability rating, as almost all districts in Massachusetts do. This is a restart for the state as far as looking at the data and looking at their assessments. We have some great opportunities to celebrate our successes, to talk about our high school being Level 1 again, which is our only rating that we get in this, none of our schools' 3th grade student get the accountability rating. However, we maintain the Level 1 rating for the high school, which we should be very proud of, and we'll certainly talk about specific pockets that we can still pull data from in the current alignment that shows we're making progress in certain areas and equally some areas that we continue to need to work with. So we will have that opportunity to look at that data that will influence instruction. What we won't have is an accountability rating. This might be confusing for parents, it might be confusing for students, so it's going to require a level of explanation. Most of the information you're going to hear tonight was just given to superintendents within the past four days. We've had four webinars with DESE in four days. So they have certainly waited on this information to put it out. Some of the main headlines you'll see in press releases, some of the main things I think you see talked about in the district is, it's going to appear this year that in most cases, student scores or success rates at the point. We're going to talk about changing categories. We're going to talk about a baseline across the state. We're there now looking at the data and have made a decision to start from this point forward that 50% of students in the state have met their targets and 50% have not. That's a significant change in what we've looked at, and we have to recalculate our expectations as a district, and we have to rethink about how we're going to get on that growth mindset, how we're going to move forward from this even without an accountability to take this information and have it influence our instruction building and help us with that. Again, certainly, we're going to have the opportunity to pull out some elements of this data and find areas where we can improve and where that data can help us get better in instruction, and that's the goal. But it is a recalculation of the entire assessment system in the state, and we have to be prepared that some of the messaging out in the public, some of the messaging coming even from DESE is going to show that the belief that in many cases statewide, student achievement has been lower, that's not the case. Ms. Reagan will talk a little bit about that, to talk about how that impacts us at Tewksbury. This is a lot. This is probably something we need to revisit as a committee, and it's something certainly we've spent some time in with the townwide PAC last night, talking to other groups, our teachers. It's going to take us a while here just to explain these changes before we're able to dive into what that data means to us. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Ms. Reagan.
Thank you. Madam Chair, through you, the presentation you have in front of you was the most up-to-date presentation we had as of Friday last week. Since then, the presentation that we received through our four sorted webinars has changed. So I hope you bear with me as you see, I have included some notes that help us understand the changes in the results throughout the presentation. And I'm going to just start with, you're going to hear the word MCAS a lot, but one MCAS is not the same as the next MCAS. We have what is called a legacy MCAS. So I'm going to clarify where we are as of last year, 2017, in the accountability and student reports. We're talking about aligned to two different, totally different tests. Legacy MCAS, which is red, it doesn't look red up there, but it is. Our legacy MCAS test, the 20-year-old test we're talking about, the legacy test, are our high school biology, ELA, and math, and there's an asterisk there because those are what we consider high stakes testing. They are what determines graduation competency. Then we have our grades five and eight, science, technology, engineering MCAS, again, a legacy test. Last year, all legacy tests were paper-based testing. Next Generation MCAS, which aligns to the new reporting that we're going to talk about, was grades three through eight, ELA, and math. Districts could choose whether they would pay per base and computer-based test on different grade levels there, okay? So when we talk about this school year, we're still in legacy MCAS testing for all the same areas. However, we're required to do the same legacy science test, computer-based test, and then we will still begin the Next Generation MCAS, grades three through eight, ELA, and math, all computer-based tests. So I think it's really important because as we said the word MCAS, all things are not the same. And then in 2019 is when the entire grade level MCAS test, and maybe this will even shift, it will be Next Generation MCAS. No longer the legacy MCAS will have sunset and gone away. So this is the plan. So as we start to look at accountability reporting, and when we talk about accountability reporting, we're talking about the levels, and Superintendent Malone already talked a little bit about what the level labels are, but what, I think it's important to know how we achieved a no level, which doesn't sound very good, but it's actually very good. There were two key criteria we had to pass this year in Next Generation. I'm only talking about Next Generation MCAS, the right-hand side of the columns that I just showed you. Criteria we had to pass was number one, participation rate. Over 90% or more in some cases, students had to participate in the Next Generation MCAS. And if you reached that participation criteria, that's good. You couldn't have dipped in level. Also, we had to have not had a low graduation rate. So satisfying both of those things kept us at a no level. So it's good. It means we satisfied that criteria. Just so that you're aware, any districts that were already at a Level 4 or 5 maintained that Level 4 or 5. That was not us. So I highlighted some key areas in all of these slides to make sense. All other NG MCAS schools will not receive an accountability level if you pass those two pieces of criteria as set in the past. So our district in our grades three through eight NG MCAS schools are at no level. That's a good thing. Our high school, still being a legacy MCAS school, they will still look at level criteria just like before, which in their, the indicators you'll see in their reports are just like they were before. Performance on achievement, growth, graduation rate, student growth percentiles, and as I said, the accountability level. So looking at data, we cannot compare old MCAS and new MCAS, and that's really critical to be aware of because you're going to see some, the sky is falling headlines out in the papers because they're comparing to the legacy MCAS, not to the new. There's no comparison to a brand-new test. And this is the type of reporting we'll see for Next Generation, grades three through eight, which I offered here as a clarifying line. This is for grade three through eight, school level. We will see achievement results. We will see student, they'll give us growth percentiles, but they're relative to only the group. They are not, they're an arbitrary growth percentile. It's a baseline growth. And when we query during our webinars, how did they come up with those growth, and we asked, is there a formula they can share? They said no. So the growth percentile is not similar to the MCAS growth percentile from the legacy MCAS, and again, we'll see no level. I think it's important to know, though, there are relative achievement indicators. So for example, subgroups will have a relative percentile when compared with all of the students in the state in their subgroup. Different than growth, but one way at least to look at our subgroup percentiles in comparison to that subgroup statewide. Okay, so reporting in 2018 and beyond, again, it's important to remember that the 2017 results are a baseline. They're like day one 20 years ago when MCAS first came out. Our 2018 determinations will reflect participation like they did this year. And then moving forward, the 2017 Next Generation MCAS administration that we went through in 2017 for grades three through eight will not negatively impact our results in 2018 going forward. So it's a whole hummus year for the Next Generation MCAS results, albeit participation and achievement. All right. So the calendar, you've seen several iterations of the calendar around data, and Superintendent Malone said to you, we got the official embargo data Monday. At 12:01 AM today, so midnight, it was publicized. So we've had very little time to really digest what all of the new accountability systems are about. What we do know is on October 24, parents will be receiving, we'll, let me just rephrase that, the district will receive the big boxes of student reports. We then break up all of those student reports because kiddos, that we get the fifth and sixth grade reports, for example, in one big box. Those sixth graders are now at the wing. What we do is break down all those groups, get them to the appropriate school. And it's important for people to know what happens at that point so that people don't think the scores are coming home in '24. At that point, the schools, then, they've created labels and envelopes for every individual student, and they stuff all those envelopes and get them ready to send home with the students in grades three through eight, and we mail them home for our high school students. Again, the high school test scores are high stakes. It's important that those are delivered right to the parent in their mailbox. What we then do is send home an email to every parent, expect your child's MCAS scores today, or your child's MCAS scores were mailed today. Once we know our parents have had an opportunity to look at the paper report, which I'm going to show you a sample of that in a minute, we then post the scaled score to the Aspen account. So that should a parent lose the paper score, the scaled score is posted to Aspen. Again, we urge the Tewksbury community, our educators, our principals, to resist jumping to conclusions about the Next Generation MCAS score versus what they may have received in a legacy MCAS score prior. It's just not the same old legacy MCAS, and that's a fact. We know that that is different. What we know that is better in our Next Generation MCAS tests, and this I have, I've put this plug in, is the focus is on mastery of standards, recall of those, of that mastery, and then critically thinking and applying the recall to both reading and writing and nonfiction, whatever that may be, science and social studies. So it is a higher rigor test, but we've been seeing that in the last couple of years with the questioning and the types of research and analysis of reading prompts are much more rigorous than they were in the past. I won't go over this, I mean, you know the percentage of students taking tests on computer were very high last year, but what is important to know, and I highlighted the bottom line in this slide, is that there was some scaling this year of computer-based test scores versus paper-based. What we saw in the last two years statewide was that students who took the exact same, well, not tests necessarily, but if a question was paper-based or computer-based and it was the same, students by and large, taking the paper-based test, were doing better because the mode of taking the test on computer was new. So the state scaled questions that were the same so that it wouldn't throw off the overall achievement level of students. My suspicion is there's still a little bit of work to do there. All right, moving forward, this is important. You heard me talk about the achievement levels before, but I think it warrants talking about it again. You saw a headline possibly in one of the papers today where it said, "Students Not Meaning Proficiency." That's an absolute, a false statement because proficiency is not an achievement level anymore in the Next Generation MCAS. In the legacy MCAS, we had advanced being the highest level a student could achieve, proficient, needs improvement, and warning. In the Next Generation MCAS, the brand-new test, there are new achievement levels that align to new achievement scores and expectations and standard setting. So I'm throwing the word standard around a lot in the next few slides. We have our curriculum framework standards, but then we have standard setting. What makes the grade, setting those standards, setting those expectations. The next slide I put in here just to help clarify, the legacy MCAS test will still be from a 200 to a 280-point system. And we've seen this year. We know that students have to do, meet proficient and advanced to really make the expectation. What we're seeing in Next Generation testing, achievement levels, is a totally different numbering system. The lowest score is 440 and the highest score is 560. The labels, again, have changed, 530 to 560, so now a 30-point span. And these numbers won't mean a lot to people, but it's important to know that 30-point span, and let me back up, in the legacy MCAS, there were no odd scores, they were all even numbered scores. There'll be odd score in the new system, so they've even revamped all of the numerical scores. The cut score is 500. So what I did here, and I tried to just give a visual representation, if a student performed in advanced, it is not a one-to-one correlation that they're most likely going to perform in exceeding expectations. That bar is much higher now. And likewise, if a student was in proficient, let's say at the lower level of proficiency, maybe at a 244, it's not an automatic correlation that they'll probably be in meeting expectations. They'll most likely be in partially meeting. So what we see, and a slide further ahead is going to show you that a little bit further, is that if you will think about it as about 8 to 10% of our students will be exceeding, about 8 to 10% or lower will be not meeting expectations, and over 80% evenly distributed will be in meeting and partially meeting. The new system is designed that way. So the slides are out of order, in my opinion, the way the state put them out, but I'm going to keep them in that order for your packet. Let me explain the report parents will see, and then I'll show you the breakdown of what the state projected the results to look like, and then set those bars based on their projection. So a parent will receive a nice colorful display, and you'll see now from 440 to 560 is the range. This is an example of a grade eight math score, student sample score report. The arrow shows, the 541 shows where that student performed, the child's score. What's below is like we've seen before, the child's score compares into the school, the district, and the state. This child did very well. On the flip side, that report will also compare the child to, in each reporting category in that content area, those are called the domain, the domains. If you look at the reporting category, for example, operations and algebraic thinking, this child would have answered seven out of 10 questions correctly, where an average number of points earned by students at the 500 mark or higher was six out of 10. So this helps to compare the child to students meeting or exceeding expectations. And then, of course, the table below is how the student did on each individual question. I want to say something about that. In the past, our legacy MCAS, many of those questions were released to the public so the parents could actually look at the question that the child maybe didn't get correct or got correct, or teachers could look at that. There'll be less questions released. This is a brand-new test, and in order to maintain integrity of those usable questions, there'll be less released. But the good news is, there'll be a description of every single question and what it asks the student to do mathematically for if it's an ELA standard. So there'll be better descriptors as to what the question was asking for and looking for in a response. So I think the question that most people will ask is, why did my child's score proficient on the legacy MCAS but only partially meeting expectations this year? And I highlighted some really important statements that the state has put out. This is a more rigorous exam than the legacy MCAS, for sure. And Massachusetts educators set the new standards, that bar, the norms, higher to signal greater readiness for every following year, keeping in mind that in the past, several students, many students across the state who performed in proficient or advanced on the 10th grade MCAS needed remediation in college. So the idea is to raise that bar. What does really meeting the standard or exceeding look like? And students that are partially, they're not failing, but how do we remediate them to meet those expectations? All right, this is the graph the state gave us in explaining the new standard setting and how they projected the statewide results to look. And basically, as I said, they looked at all the data. They set a midline and said 50% of that midline will be above and 50% will be below. So what does that mean for us in our district? You know, it doesn't mean our students learn less. It means that they're measuring achievement in a very, very different way, and that's so important that we keep driving that home to our parents and to our teachers. It means they're measuring what is that high, high level much differently, and less students will be in those levels. We also know that, as I said, they're raising that standard in order to make sure our students are not in need of deep remediation when they hit the college arena. So interpreting the projected results, I'm going to just speed ahead a little bit. Going into the standard setting, the state kept a couple of things in mind. One of the goals set forth by the new standards and by the board was to look to the national and international benchmarks during the development of our Next Generation MCAS. It's important for us to really remember that Massachusetts continues to be first or tied for first. However, they wanted our own state standard setting to reflect that 50% of students nationwide and even in our own state that need to, we need to raise that bar for, we need to bring them further ahead. So you'll see that our Next Generation data will look a lot like a distribution like the NAEPs, less like the distribution we've seen before in our legacy MCAS. If our results were to look like legacy MCAS, notice the green and yellow, the top bar and the bottom bar, when we get to grade 10, in each content area, 80 to 90% of our students or more are meeting or exceeding. Our data is not expected to look like that moving forward, is what the state is telling So before I conclude, while we try to focus on making academic improvements, we can't lose sight of improving our focus on teaching the whole child, on social emotional competency, on our inclusion model, on those non-academic barriers to learning. What barriers come to the classroom, whether it be instruction from the teacher, our curriculum, or our students', you know, economic advantage or disadvantage, whether they're language learners, and we have to continue to focus our instruction as well as our support on all of those areas and not only take a look at academic achievement, but all of that. We continue to improve in those areas. We want to continue to shine in meeting students' needs across the board. So when the parent reports go home, again, there's a letter that's going to come home from the acting commissioner, Jeff Wilson, that directs parents to supports around understanding the new report. This website, which we shared with our PAC, the D O E dot M A S dot E U slash MCAS parents, has lots of links around understanding the report, understanding the score. We'll determine how many presentations and where we'll provide parents support from the district level as once we work with our principals and our teachers in understanding the reports. And then finally, I think, to celebrate, Tewksbury's accountability level is still wonderful. Our Level 1 school, our preschool, all perform the state in all areas. Our Level 1 school, our preschool outperformed the state in all areas. Our Wynn, Ryan, North Street, Trahan, we outperformed the state in grades 3, 4, 5, 7, and 8 ELA. We outperformed the state in grades 3, 4, and 8 math. We're almost making that 50% range in our other grades. We'll be closely analyzing all of the grade-level data with our principals and then through our teachers to see what we can do as we understand this whole new system to improve areas we have already been looking at. Our middle grades math and science, still an area, and it was not looking different in this, in next-generation MCAS, areas where we need to really flood our supports in.
Can I just back up one minute, because we're on the committee people list. Can you just repeat about, we've got the high school, but about those other grades, other schools, where we outperformed?
Yes, yes. In the next-generation MCAS, not our legacy, but next generation, the brand-new test and the brand-new achievement levels, we outperformed the state in grades 3, 4, 5, 7, and 8 ELA, making almost 50%. And outperforming the state means meeting or exceeding, okay? And then in math, we outperformed the state in grades 3, 4, and 8 math, and we held fairly steady as to where we were last year, in grades 6, 5, 6, 7 math, and then our science I just want to reiterate that no level is good this year, because it means we did meet all of the criteria the state set out for having, not dipping to a level of grade or lower.
And then can I just ask also, can you, I mean, I think we took some good notes, but can you send us the updated presentation you gave this evening and email that to all the school committee members, so we have the most current?
We'll post it on the website as well.
Okay.
And as we continue to get better trained in how to disseminate this data, really analyze it, and know what to do, we'll continue to bring up this.
Okay, great. So this time, I'd like to actually open it up to my colleagues, if anyone has any questions for Mr. Regan at this time.
I have a quick question. You spoke about the growth rate. They were setting an arbitrary growth rate. Can you explain that in a little further detail?
So what they tried to attempt to do is create all the series of these tests. They did when they went from MCAS to PARC, from PARC to MCAS 2.0. They created an algorithm to try to calculate growth, even though it's a different task from the year to year. They've come to the conclusion that because of the change in standards and the re-leveling of this test, that they cannot accurately predict a growth rate. The growth rates they've provided would be very typical, probably to what we saw last year. They're just not going to lie. There was nothing in there that pops out and looks troubling. Typically, you want your growth rate anywhere between 40 and 60%, you know? So you can see in areas where we need to do better, that growth rate's going to be lower, or where we've done well, it's going to be higher. What we can't really rely on is that actual growth rate measuring the previous MCAS 2.0 to next-generation MCAS test, and they're admitting that. When they had done it before moving test to test, they said this is kind of, I remember seeing the actual algorithms displayed for me, and they said, this is our best. It's not an exact science, but it's our best guess. We needed that growth data to really push. Without a accountability label, the necessity for the growth data also doesn't have the weight that it would have had.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you. I think, as a committee member, I'm speaking for myself, we're confused. So I'm thinking that maybe a lot of parents are confused. I know in the past, we've had public meetings where parents were invited to discuss. We have that plan this time?
We don't have a date planned, but we realize that we are going to need to understand it better ourselves and then do our best to describe the new system to our parents. We had a brief opportunity to do that with the townwide PAC. And I think what is very clear, what they walk, the understanding is this is very different, a new system to understand. It really puts us back to square one, like we were first out of the MCAS, and we'll, you know, keep bringing them into that information loop as we want.
Yes, I think that's going to be very important, because I think as a parent, you know, my children have done, when I get one of those envelopes, I look at that first, and the first question I would say about my students was, are they proficient? And what happened to make this happen? So I think you're going to get a lot of questions.
Yeah. And the first thought with that, again, is the acting commissioners. What we have, you know, on our side this time around is the benefit of the technology and the digital reports, because we can get data quicker. But what the department has also put out is several levels of support for parents through the acting commissioner's letter. So that's really where parents will start, is going to the support that the state has put out. And then we'll, I mean, at that time, we'll be catching up with understanding it better and hopefully can answer questions better if they have some. Very soon.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Mr. Cutler?
Thank you, Jeff. I read this morning in the Globe about this, right? And a lot of the focus was on the scores being less. But it seems what you're saying, and in reality is, they want to make it tougher. They've worked on the curriculum for the last 15 years, they made that more demanding, more rigorous, and they want the testing to catch up with that. And we should be fortunate, I think, as a parent, that our kids are going to school in Massachusetts. We're the leader in this, and that we're pushing, and that the colleges and the business community recognize that the kids are coming and they're not ready, and they want them to be ready. So we took the lead on this. So as a parent, even though my kids are grown, I might have grandchildren in the future, I'm happy that I'm here in Massachusetts, and I'm happy that they're doing this. And this is a positive beneficial thing for us. Wouldn't you say?
I would say that, you know, we compare ourselves to ourselves, and that, you know, throws out a lot of anxiety at parents, but when we compare ourselves to the nation, I'm very happy that we live here in Massachusetts, too. All of our kids are doing fantastic. Quite honestly, all of our kids. However, we want them all to be at that, at the highest level we can get, which is meeting and exceeding.
Right. It seems like a good.
It's a courageous move, but it's a move that's calculated to be made while we're at the height, as opposed to responding to a need. They're making a change while they're at the height of success, but hopefully use more success. As opposed to what they're really thinking they're responding to here is, they feel that the current MCAS test may have seen its best days, and it's time to move on from that. And I think that's why they took the approach, and why we've gone through four different tests in four years, to try to match what's going to be best for Massachusetts and really bring back the standards that we taught in the classroom. So it's good hard work. I think on our end, we've got two or three days on all of you, appearing this information. We wish we had two or three months to kind of digest this ourselves and message it out, and we're only going to be a week ahead of parents. So we're going to be in a catch-up mode for.
Tomorrow, we'll be talking to principals to call out individual teacher, classroom results, and then how they share those with their teachers. We'll be walking you through that activity, because right now, it really is about what happened in each classroom. It's really, it's about us, it's about our instruction improvement, and not about the student at this point. We'll look at the general results, we'll look at the items, and then we'll try to disseminate, where was it in what we, you know, we have a good year on the New Jersey implementation. I did get paid off, and people are seeing those scores. Fantastic comparison, big group. And now, and it's not permanent, not just, I'm looking forward to that, first of all. I make that report going to improve very fast.
I think we're going to have to concentrate on the messaging, even on the parent report. And as Ms. Regan discussed, you're going to have a significant number of students who might have been proficient in the MCAS 2.0, all of a sudden finding themselves in partially meeting expectations. And if you land in there in your parent report, you're going to get this message. The school, in consultation with the student's parent guardian, should consider whether the student needs additional academic assistance to succeed in this subject. So we talked to DESC about that message and some of those things, because it doesn't quite jive with some of the other correlating messages, and we're going to have to work with parents on that, because as we said, a parent's going to have, can have a visceral reaction to this, in this change. We need to be able to support them through this, help them through this, certainly work with our staff to make sure they have the confidence. We're going to have teachers who certainly receiving results as well. What does that mean for them? So this is, this is going to be a bit of a process to go through for all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Mrs. Bennett?
Thank you for the report. It's very informational, hopefully parents are going to be, because I do think you aren't going to get a lot of calls, as Mr. Wilson said. And I'm assuming in that letter that goes home with the results, we'll be able to put some information in there for parents, so you're not barred from calls. Hopefully, we'll be able to do that. I do have a question on, go forward, more to the high school, denied that the legacy and that we're still helping the council, and we did extremely well again, keeping our Level 1, which is great. And I kind of read it ahead and said that they're still going to keep the Abigail out of the scholarships and everything else. In the past, we piloted a grade 11 testing. Is that something they're looking into, implementing this year, or another pilot, or role? What's your feedback on that?
They are still considering grade 11 tests. History is still on the table, yet there's been no determination. That determination will be made sometime in the 2018, in 2018 and 19, where that will lie. There are two trainings to thought. One, a whole, a unique and standalone history test, or taking the competency determination ELA test, infusing it with informational history text, and either keeping it at the 10th grade or moving it to the 11th, closer to graduation. So it's still up for discussion. There's a lot of things up for discussion. One of the things in there that they didn't really get into was determining the level for the district. In the past, the lowest leveled school determined the district level. So you could have, you know, three Level 1 schools, two Level 2s, and one 3, and the district becomes a Level 3, right? That is up for discussion. It doesn't look like, when we get to 2019, and we're all next-generation MCAS, it doesn't look like that's the way that we level in districts anymore. But there's been no final determination on what other level you use to do the level. So lots of changes coming down the pipe. But yes, grade 11 test is still on the table, just don't know when or if.
One other question. Do you see the next generation moving to the 9th grade by all of you, or?
Definitely will in 2019, yes. So we may start to see our high school academic achievement level shift as well, but it's nice to be on the front end of this, especially with the base lesson and making shifts now in the other grade. You know, let's be really honest, again, out in public, we, our younger level and older level students are still succeeding quite well. We struggle in those middle years, as do many districts, and this is the focus of where we need to flood our supports from now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennett. I don't know, any questions? Mr. Sullivan?
Sorry, I have one follow-up from the superintendent. You said there's going to be a lot of students now that are going to follow, maybe not a lot, but some tend to the partially meeting expectation and seek extra help, see with a teacher. Are we prepared? Do we have those resources?
We do have those resources, yes. And normally, what we've increased the interest in is the transnational supports in rural education, in those, in the classroom with the students. But some of those, and this is part of the piece on that, because it might lead a parent down that road, that I need this program, or I need this. We had that discussion with the commissioner on a webinar earlier this week, and that's not their intent in putting this in here. However, I'm not so sure a parent wouldn't question that. So I think what's always good is when we have parents talking to their teachers, talking to their school-based administrators, to talk about what two things can we work on together to improve achievement, and really look at a far more focus probably on what's in the day-to-day instruction, what's the achievement level in the classroom on a regular basis than on this one-time assessment.
Yeah, we think grant money attached.
Can you talk a little bit about that again?
Okay, so we have grant money typically attached. I wonder if that's going to increase now with maybe identifying more students in that area? Okay, that's all set. Any more questions? Okay, great. Next, we're going to move to citizens forum. Is there anyone wishing to speak this evening? Please just identify your name and your street address.
Stephen Johnson, 21st Street. Excuse me, sorry. I had a question on a policy, the course change policy. Like, one, I guess first, because I believe I understand this correctly, but am I, I'm correct that in the new policy, if you have an elective that you don't even have till second semester, if you don't drop it by the first quarter progress report, you cannot drop that course and switch it? Is that correct? That's how it reads?
Yeah. I mean, it does say that. I'm actually reading the policy itself. It absolutely does say that, and that's what the students are told. If you're having, you're having a question.
No, no, my question with that is, because I see quite a few problems with it written like that. The first is, I mean, at the beginning, it's saying that the policy's set up for students, teachers, and parents to make an informed course decision. I'm not really sure how a teacher could make an informed decision for a student they haven't even had yet, so that's one. And I'm not sure how a student and a parent's going to make a decision on a class that they're several months away from even starting. So I don't see how you can do that. And the court, the policy also specifically references elective courses. Well, elective courses are really the only thing you're going to have in the second half of the year, that you don't already know something about. So to specifically note, you can't change an elective, you have no control over when you take an elective either. The schedule comes out, you might have wished you were taking engineering in the first half of the year, but you don't know it. You could end up with it in the second half of the year. Or you could take Engineering 1 with the expectation you're going to take Engineering 2. Well, in October, you might think you're still okay. By the end of the course, you might realize, this is not for me. And now you're stuck in Engineering 2. And if someone says, well, if you didn't do very well, well, then what does that mean? Where is very well? If the administrator says, well, you got to see, you should just do it. I mean, I might not agree with that, but what do I do? Because the policy doesn't allow me, you know, I can't presume common sense. You know, you can't guarantee it, you can't presume it, and certainly can't enforce it. So I can only work with what's there. Or in a really bad situation, what if a student took a course in the first half of the year, there was a graduation requirement, but they flunked it? Now they need a class to make up for that, because in the last semester, but now they can't make a change? I know it sounds ridiculous, but, you know, the answer is often, our hands are tied, and, you know, that's the policy. You know, I worry about that, because it doesn't seem to take into account the possibility that, you know, you don't know anything about that class yet, other than that little blurb you read when you signed up for it the spring before, you know? I know at the beginning of the year, they meet with their teachers for smaller time than an actual class to get, you know, to get activated. While I still think that this would be, the way this is written is problematic, at a bare minimum, even if someone chose not to change anything in here, it would seem like during that time frame, some time with the teachers that they're not going to have for five months, at least given their course expectations/syllabus at the beginning of the year, so you might have some idea beyond just that little blurb you get about what the class is. I still think it's a problem if you can't get out of a class that you haven't even had yet, because in one case, you have a month and a half to determine how you're going to do, and then you can drop it. You have zero days to figure it out for an elective in the second half of the year. I mean, I know it can cause havoc for scheduling, you know, in terms of having to reschedule students' courses, but I don't really see how in the second semester, that's any different than the first semester, in terms of if you have to move somebody around. If you're moving around in the first semester in October, I don't see why in, I don't know what it would be, February, March, I don't know when that progress report comes out in the second half of the year, why you wouldn't be able to do the same thing. I can understand not dropping a core course in February. I mean, you know, you have an idea at that point. You know, I understand that, but it just seems like, you know, it's kind of a crapshoot, because you don't know what your schedule's going to be, and which classes you're going to get given in first semester versus second semester until you've got them. So that's just a concern I had, that, you know, you could find yourself in that situation, but you're not going to know it for months.
Thank you, Mr. Josh Johnson. We appreciate your support. Could you do me a favor? Could you just leave your name, well, I know your name, but your name and number with Mrs. Johnson back there? We will definitely follow you. We appreciate your feedback. We will definitely follow up with you, and thank you for coming this evening.
Not a problem. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to turn it over to our clerk at this time, Mr. Sullivan, to present our meeting minutes.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the September twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen, regular meeting minutes.
I'll second that motion.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the September twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen, regular meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
I also, sorry. I'd also like to move the school department payroll for the pay, pay period ending ten five twenty seventeen, to be approved and certified on the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of one million, three hundred, two thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and nineteen cents.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the payroll period ending October fifth, two thousand and seventeen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our superintendent, Mr. Malone, for our superintendent staff reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A quick update on a couple elements. One, the North Street installation of the new boiler project. And you may not have heard too much about this because it's been done extremely efficiently. In fact, the last electrical was done today. The installation is complete. They're going to test run it on Thursday, the twenty-sixth. And this was a little bit to my surprise, installation of a piecemeal boiler into an existing school, into its basement during the operation of the school, and it wasn't even noticed. And I was very concerned about this when it, when it came in, and the contractor showed me that it wouldn't be a problem. It's always great to have pleasant surprises on that. And certainly, John Marshon, who ended up coordinating that and working with that company, he couldn't do enough to make sure that happened efficiently. But we're glad to report that, and hopefully, all testing will go great next week in that new oil and oil operations. So, I'm very happy with that. Just also, a quick thank you to some district personnel for a townwide event we had here last Saturday, and a tremendous effort by our custodial staff, our technology staff, to help out in a townwide event that was certainly very important to town. And certainly, there were a great deal of people in the building, and it was great to see some of our school personnel really step up and participate and do a great job. So, I'm very thankful for that. Ms. Reagan and Mr. Pelletier and myself were able to meet with the leadership from the Tewksbury CPAC yesterday. And we had a very productive meeting and talked about a lot of opportunities to work together in the future, and certainly had a great start to what we hope is going to be a great, long-lasting collaborative relationship. Great opportunity for us to learn a little bit about what the CPAC's vision is, and certainly work together more in terms of support their needs. So, that was, that was fantastic. Also, last night, we had our first townwide PAC meeting. Great turnout by our PAC leadership from each one of the buildings and our administrators from those buildings as well. We took the opportunity to discuss some of those MCAS informational pieces with parents and got some of their feedback. And also, we had the opportunity with Mr. Francis to give them an update on the elementary school building project, and really begin to initiate some of those pieces to really incorporate parent involvement, parent excitement, and really work to get information out about what the status of that new school project will be within the term. So, terrific opportunity for us. And just finally, some follow-up dates, just to think about on our calendar. The Apple Fest will be on Saturday, October twenty-eighth, here at Tewksbury Memorial High School. Also, the production of Peter and the Star Catcher will be November second through November fourth here at Tewksbury Memorial High School. A reminder on some scheduling elements. The November seventh, Tuesday, is a professional development day for all staff in town. There's no school for students. Also, no school on Friday, November tenth, that is Veterans Day. And finally, a reminder that November seventeenth is our annual Tewksbury Education Foundation auction, so we're very excited about that as well. With that, I'll hand that off to Ms. Reagan.
Thank you. As promised, including for you, the Tewksbury summer reading statistics. We can see that they continue to have high participation in summer reading. Eighty-seven percent overall of our high school students participate in summer reading. They take a little longer to get to us because they utilize the assignment in the first baseline writing assignment in class. So, we can see, though, that the freshmen continue to lead the charge. They come in with the bend at ninety percent summer reading, down to eighty-three percent, which is still quite formidable for our seniors to read prior to their last school year here. So, we thank Lynn Haddig for taking the charge of summer reading from Brian and Noah, the two of them together, and really creating quite a reputation for the high school, new summer reading achievement. Today, we received in the consent agenda, you see some of that student assessment dates again. We received our John Abigail Adams Scholarship letters and sent them over to the high school. They'll be going home in the next week. And then in December, we'll be honoring those students along with our high-achieving MCAS students overall. An update on our PSAT administration. On October eleventh, four hundred and eighty-five students were slated to take the PSATs. Those are our sophomores and juniors. An actual four hundred and thirty percent, four hundred and thirty students participated in the PSAT testing, that's eighty-nine percent of our sophomores and juniors. The benefit is that the more students that practice the PSATs in our school will do better when it comes time to taking the actual SATs. In addition, the more juniors that take the PSATs, which is a high-stakes test for them because it is connected to American scholarships, the better it is for our students that we get that percentage of students participating in that. So, again, thank you to the school committee. The final bill was seven thousand, eighty dollars, eighty-nine percent of our students participate in school on the PSATs.
Thank you. Question?
Addition. I'm sorry.
I'd be curious to see, because it's the first time in a while anybody took a big non-building, how those, how those results are compared to the data in different places, just so we can be able to comfortable and all surrounded and stuff. So, I'd be curious to see those numbers.
Things and distractions like games and club activities don't get in the way of them taking their, their, their school. Thank you. Also, this week, we had our annual school council training. I was quite impressed. We had over thirty attendees. Typically, we have reoccurring school council members. Many of you have been on school councils, as have I. But we saw so many members to the school councils. And if you are not aware, the school council is a legal responsibility under the law reform, where school councils help our principals create action plans and goals to improve learning at their schools. So, it was wonderful. Kevin McCarthy led that training once again, and he's a seasoned school principal with Tewksbury and did a very good job training our council members. On October twelfth, our principals participated in the second session of the REVIS training on how to support and strategize socio-emotional learning strategies into the core curriculum. The training was received wonderfully. It was quite successful. We'll be continuing that work with our principals in disseminating those strategies and how they'll show themselves to students. And that concludes my things.
Thank you, Mrs. Reagan. Well, since our last meeting, the October special town meeting took place, I would just like to take a minute to thank the community for their approval of the school department more in our case. With these approved funds, we were able to purchase our new lift for the high school, and it should be here next week. It's a mobile lift, and it can be transported between the buildings if we need it to be. Mr. Marshon and I will be meeting with CBI Consulting tomorrow morning. They're one of the town's architects that we have contracted. We'll be traveling to the doing school and the heat brook school starting at eight-thirty in the morning, and we're going to look at all the doors and exactly what we need to do to kind of put the specs together, doors bid for everything. We have the specs for the new fire alarm system for the doing in the heat brook, and we've already put that into the central registry, and we're going to be going on to bid for those next week. And we're gathering the specs for the heating controls at the wind school and the painting project at the heat brook school, which I can report more next month when I have the details on those. And as we're in the second month of the school year, our busing issues are depleting. We still have a couple of problems that we're trying to work on while trying to still maintain our focus to keep the students safe and transported, too, as from the school and the family.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennet. Do we have any questions for Mr. Malone, Mrs. Reagan, or Miss Bennet? Okay, we're moving right along to our consent agenda. Does anyone wish to take anything off the consent agenda this evening? Not seeing anyone. Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda.
I'll second.
So, I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you. Moving right to our committee reports. Mr. Francis, if you could start with the elementary school building.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Ms. Malone mentioned, we've got a meeting before the townwide PAC, just to give them an update on the project. Also, at that meeting, we introduced Molly Ginsburg, who'll be heading up our friends at the new elementary school, so we must not give that move along. But we're in a good place right now currently. We've already sent out the IRFAS for our architect, and we should be getting reports back and applications back from the architects soon. The next key date for that process is November twenty-first. We've been ticketed to go before the MSBA review panel, selection panel that day. And the way that that panel will work is they have nine votes, and basically, we have three, and they will review all the applications and all the applicants. And one or two things will happen that day. In all probability, they'll narrow the list of architects down to three, or they could just name the architect that day, depending on what the vote is. So, that's an exciting time. We have our next full elementary school building meeting tomorrow night, first one in a while, with everybody present. So, we'll give everybody an update on what's going on and where we're at. But we're moving forward, and as we move forward, things are going to happen much more at a higher level faster. So, we're all excited and looking forward to the meeting tomorrow night. Once again, that's a public meeting. Everybody wants to attend, they're more than happy to be there.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Mr. Colless, would you like to add anything?
No, very thorough.
Mr. Francis, the chairperson of that, even though Mr. Colless sits on it, Mr. Francis has great share reporting on that, so thank you for those updates. Moving right down to the Tewksbury Education Foundation, Mrs. Bennet.
As Mr. Malone stated earlier, the big TEF auction is going to be held November seventeenth at the Tewksbury Country Club from seven to eleven. You can purchase your tickets at Apple Fest, as well as on committee PAC online, and also some of the board members for the TEF also have tickets. And again, you can reach out to any committee member here, and they'll get you tickets.
Good thinking, Mrs. Bennet. And Mr. Sullivan, is there any update on the wellness committee?
Nothing new to report, but one quick announcement. On October twenty-eighth, the Tewksbury Police Department is having Prescription Drug Takeback Day, and that's from ten AM to two PM, right over there on nine eighteen Main Street. So, if anyone has any unused or unwanted prescriptions that they need to get rid of, they could certainly do that at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving right along to our policies this evening, Mrs. Bennet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In our PAC this evening, we have twenty-seven policies that are here for just informational session. We encourage the public out there to take a look at these policies and give us any feedback. These are policies that we have been reviewing, our current policies, based on what Anthony F.C. has referenced recommendations to us. And following policies are in our PAC. DGA, authorized signatures. DJE, procurement requirement. DK, payment procedures. DKC, extend reimbursement. EB, safety program. EVB, first aid. EBC, emergency plans. EC, buildings and ground maintenance management. ECA, buildings and ground security. EDC, authorized use of school-owned materials. EEAA, walker and riders. EEAE, bus drivers examination and training. EEAE-A dash one, dragon alcohol testing for school bus and commercial vehicle drivers. EFC, free and reduced price food services. FA, facilities development goals. FF, naming facilities. FFA, memorials. GVA, equal employment opportunity. GBEA, staff ethics. GBEV, staff conduct. GBED, staff tobacco. GVGV, staff personnel security. GVGE, domestic violence league. GVGF, family and medical league. GBI, staff participation and political activities. GBK, staff complaints and grievances. GCBA, professional staff salary schedules. And again, this does not require any voting at this point. This is just for informational reading. And again, we encourage anyone to come forward if you have any edits or recommendations for our committee. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennet. Moving right on to old business, or would you, Mr. Malone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've already done the next generation MCAS updates, so we'll settle on that. And in your PAC, you'll find a, just a very brief three-year district enrollment analysis report that really reflects on two slides. And as you look at these bar graphs, I think what's very interesting is how consistent we are. There aren't many jumps in enrollment or inconsistencies. A couple of quick things that would draw your attention to. The first one would be in the K numbers with the two thousand and seventeen piece. I'm going to talk a little bit about that on the second slide. The next would be the obvious drop-off, consistent drop-off from grade eight to grade nine, where that is impacted by the anywhere from seventy to ninety students that attend Shawshank Tech at that time, or may make other decisions about their, their education. But it's been a very consistent trend. This helps us a great deal in predicting class sizes and looking at staffing. So, that's a very good piece. If you look at the second slide, which is our NESDEC projection for two thousand and eighteen, that matches up a little bit with the K numbers from two thousand and seventeen. The most difficult number to predict is your K when we move to a full-day K, because we're looking at multiple forms of evidence from pre-K to make a determination about what we can expect our K sizes to be. You don't have to mention, this is only our second year of having a full-day K. We had a big enrollment of two hundred and seventy-five students in two thousand and seventeen. We made the prediction that would likely go along with that. We waited a great deal of time to try to finalize that prediction that had to do with class size and teacher allotments with that. We made the decision to make an expectation that it could be equal to the size in two thousand and seventeen, but it wasn't, it's not the case. So, we were a bit over, we predicted a little bit more than what we actually got for this year. But we also wanted to be safe, more safe than sorry. So, we'll be making those adjustments as, as we move along. And it's not that unusual that it would have a particular graduation cohort here that has a blip in its overall numbers. We'll just have to make sure if that's a single blip that we follow with along and make sure that that class-sized allotment and resources that go along with that we could predict as well. So, that's pretty much the, the analysis of that three-year. It's a very steady trend. The NESDEC predictions, for the most part, are spot-on. We've done some additional work with long-term predictions as part of the elementary school building project, so we can, you know, make the assumption that these predictions are old and true over the three-year trend, that we've got a, a good opportunity to trust those long-term predictions that are linked to the school building.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Malone? Do you have any, Mrs. Bennet?
Just one other observation, grade observation. Between grade six and seven, we have, we really don't see much of a drop-off. So, again, I think that goes well for our middle school, that students are staying here in that district, but I can see that being another point. But I can see that being another point where we may, you know, decide to go other routes than our primary school, so that's, it bodes well for us. And then I also ask you on the projection, 2018, when is that done? Is that three years ago that the projection was done or concepted?
So that's year.
I think it's K.
So that will be what they were thinking of.
Right.
They missed your COVID numbers.
And again, that K number is difficult, very difficult. Particularly difficult in when we're only in our second year of full-day K. So that, as full-day K continues on, we'll probably have a bit more of a consistent look at that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Bennet. Okay, moving right along to new business, Mr. Malone.
Chief.
Madam Chair, thrilled to present to you this letter from Governor Baker in regards to the award of fiscal year 2017-18, Quality Enhancing in After-School and Out-of-School Time, which is called our ASQ Continuation Grant in the amount of $34,950. This grant is typically used for our support programs. I'll list a few of them that you've heard me talk about recently. Our credit recovery program here at the high school, our MCAS summer and ongoing support programs, and service learning initiatives that have accompanied those support programs. We really owe our deepest appreciation to Dr. Bastieri for her continued prioritizing of these programs and seeking out the funds to run them. Just from her, quote from Dr. Bastieri, "100% of our MCAS support students have passed a proficient or higher our MCAS test at the high school." So these programs are important, this grant is just so important. And I'd say we can see the very good shit.
Again, I think it goes unnoticed, Dr. Bastieri does an awful lot for bringing an extra month to this district and it does go unnoticed and it's truly appreciated. And these are absolutely great, we've seen many gains just from getting these. So again, thank you to Dr. Bastieri.
Next in new business will require a vote of the committee. Senora Braxa Dudley has put forth a proposal, the students travel to Montreal, Canada during Memorial Day weekend of 2018. This will have minimal impact on students missing school as the Friday, May 25th is a half-day and Monday, May 28th is a no-school day due to Memorial Day holiday. The trip is offered with French students in mind, but is only for all students. Seniors and juniors will have first priority. This is an opportunity which we haven't had in quite some time, as long as I can remember, where our French language learners will have the opportunity to exercise the learning of a new language. The cost for this trip is quite affordable because it's a, they'll be traveling, a luxury coach to Montreal, Canada. And the cost comparison, again, is lower at approximately $1,000 per student. We will be using the Eftors, who have a great reputation, they do so for all of our international travel, as well as our national travel here in the States. The students will be visiting from Quebec City to old Montreal, Notre Dame Basilica. So we're steadily seeking out Google to begin marketing the Montreal trip.
Any comments or questions? I guess I just look, she continues to just surprise us and provide so many opportunities for our students. And I thought it was really great because we know we do have another trip planned and thinking outside the box and having this, we get a different timeframe, more affordable, you know, not so far away. So I think this is great. I love to see our students, you know, have the opportunities provided by the school to take on these trips if they so desire. But a special thank you to Senora Dudley, she does a wonderful job and I thank her for putting this together. So that being said, Miss, I would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to support the international trip to Quebec to Montreal, May 25th, 2018, from May 28th, 2018.
Okay. So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor to support the international trip to Quebec to Montreal, May 25th through May 28th, with Senora Dudley, our Spanish teacher at Tewksbury Memorial High School, accompanying our students. I'm going to just roll call votes, so everyone knows where everyone stands. Mrs. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
I vote aye as well, and I hope a lot of students take advantage of this wonderful opportunity. Thank you again, Senora Dudley, appreciate it.
The next item on the new business is the maintenance groundskeeper school certification. I thought it was important to put this in to kind of show how wonderful it was that we did get the grounds maintenance person last year. And Mr. Decker, Paul Decker, if you can see from the pictures, the first two pictures are this high school here. So we were able to finally put the tea in and put it all in. And I'm sure you've noticed out there, all the cute little red, white, blue hat around our chairs, which the kids love out there. But Paul was able to kind of put down some black mulch and put down some different shrubbery and it really looks fantastic out there now. And the next three pictures are the Heath Brook School over on the right, as you're looking at the school. And he kind of wanted to show, before picture, after he kind of like graded all the, built the grass and everything. And then he kind of went, got our approval to go get some flowers, make it all look nice and pretty. And I, it does look wonderful over there. So little by little, he's trying to hit each school and kind of make it look nice. And I thought it was important to kind of point it out to you and what he is trying to do to make the schools look better.
Thank you, Mrs. Bennet. I have to agree, driving around to several of our schools, picking up my children, I've noticed a big difference. And that certainly has to opt to Mr. Decker and the staff. I mean, he's definitely been one of the things. These pictures show it, but I think people are noticing the changes and the appearance of the schools, and it really does go a long way. So please thank him for that. I'm impressed.
I'd like to also make a note, at the Heath Brook, this area that he screwed up is now also serving to minimize the traffic at drop-off time because now the preschoolers, the small number of preschool-age community service students are able to pull in there and then walk down that walkway by that beautiful area, and that's their new entrance to their dedicated classrooms.
Wonderful. Truly wonderful, great things going on. Okay, and then last but not least, the Red Cross?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Tully through Ms. Vogel is requesting to establish a student activity account. We're going to establish the Red Cross Club. Certainly, this would provide some terrific community service opportunities for our students, a well-established organization. Certainly to help out, they have some sort of veterans activities, flood drives, other elements. But certainly, with all we've seen in the news with the most recent natural disasters, both in the United States and the Caribbean, it provides a real-world connection for our students to tap some community service funding and other things that they can really drive some of their learning and tool experiences. So we think it's a fantastic opportunity. It requires good, really good resources.
Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll probably make that motion to establish the Tewksbury Memorial High School Red Cross Club. Needing to recognize the Red Cross Club, need to establish a student activity account for that club.
I'll second that.
So the motion is second on the floor to establish the Tewksbury Memorial High School Red Cross Student Activity Account. I'm going to do roll call vote on this. Mrs. Bennet?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. I think they do so many wonderful things and I think that student activity account is going to help them continue their activities towards all the school world. So I think it's a wonderful idea. Special thanks again to Mrs. Tully, appreciate that, for coming forward and establishing that for our students. Thank you. Moving on to school committee matters of interest, I'm going to start with you this evening, Mr. Sullivan.
Yes, Saturday is halfway to Earth Day. You can either sign up to help participate on the town website or to show up anytime between 8:30 and 9:00 down at Town Hall. Supposed to be a beautiful day and help clean up the community. Something else along those lines, leaf pickup staffs on October 23rd, and it runs through December 1st. So all of us need to clean up our leaves and have them taken away by the town. You can also go to the town website, they do that on a street-by-street basis. Certain areas in town have different days. You can find that information there. And finally, October 29th is the Community Safe Halloween right here at Tewksbury Memorial High School, and it's from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Francis?
I just have a question as opposed to the annual Veterans Day assembly at the high school. Do we have a date for that yet?
The invitation, I believe, I thought we had a placeholder on there. November 9th, 9:30 AM for Thursday.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Bennet? And then I think the only thing I want to reiterate again is just to piggyback on what Ms. Matthews said earlier today, is that I want to just send a special thank you out to our town manager, Mr. Richard Montori, our Board of Selectmen, and also our Finance Committee, who are working together, collaborating with the school committee and the school district to establish those warrant articles that are, that do so much good within our district. And then also, of course, it goes unsaid, a special thank you to our community for getting out and voting in support of our schools. We can't thank you enough. We feel so grateful at the schools to receive the support we do within this community. So again, just a shout-out to our partners there, a lot of great work's going on to continue and to move us forward, and we certainly appreciate that. Our next school committee meeting is scheduled for November 15th. We hope everyone tunes in. And I would like just to ask, are there any future agenda items from anyone this evening that we'd like to put on? Again, if there's none this evening, you can always reach out to myself and Mr. Malone to get them on. And at this point, I'd like to ask, do we have a motion to return?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor for during the meeting this evening. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, we look forward to seeing Malone on November 15th. And as always, if you have any feedback, feel free to reach out in, we must have any time. Thank you.[1762.63][1762.63][music]